I have to tell you tonight that I admire every single superintendent in Yuma County. I'm proud to work next to my colleagues. Each of us has unique circumstances, but my colleagues are driven to do the very best, and it's an honor to serve alongside of them during this time. I also want you to know that this has been the heaviest experience of my life, feeling responsibility for 11,000 students and families, 900 employees and their families, and the impact that our district ultimately has on the health, safety, economy, and workforce of Yuma County. But yet not once have I ever felt abandoned by my governing board, and not once have I felt abandoned by our teachers or any employee group. It's actually quite the contrary. I credit relationships at all levels, communications in various ways, respect for one another, and the relentless expectation of our work together. I do want to assure you as our governing board that we have elite leaders and professionals employed at every level, and it cannot be admired or commended enough for the professionalism dedicated to students and families in the forms of hours in work, hours in learning, and deep personal sacrifice for themselves and their own family. You're going to be given a lot of information tonight that is fact. It is an opportunity for you to interact and ask questions as the governing board, although each person in front of you only has a certain amount of time, and it's easy to want to ask a lot of questions and want to hear from them. And it's easy for us to really want to talk a lot about the work that we do because we're incredibly proud. I'm humbled and fiery all at once, and I will push as a leader to be better personally, and I'll push this organization as hard as possible. We're living, creating, and achieving amazing things in a virtual world. Our students continue to grow like never before, and that's the data you're going to hear about tonight. They respond to all that is before them. And for all of us participating, and for all of our Yuma Union High School District colleagues that are watching, we will continue to level up in this district. We're never done. We're never satisfied. This isn't a victory. It's just a moment in time where we can share data in a snapshot to you based on what we are actually doing, not what is out in the mainstream news stream. It's really an honor for me. I get to introduce Lori Honeycutt. Lori will be speaking tonight about career and technical education. Again, as board members, you get to ask questions. They'll be presenting some information to you, and they're ready for you. So I hope you enjoy this information in this evening, and thank you for the opportunity to have a study session.
Good afternoon, everybody. Super happy to be with you today and to share some of our career and technical education data sets. In March, when Yuma Union High School District staff and students had to begin remote education, CTE had $2.8 million involved in CTE lab projects throughout the district. I'm very happy to report that the projects continued uninterrupted, and we are continuing again this fall. A few of our projects include a state-of-the-art commercial culinary lab at Yuma High School, which we received the certificate of occupancy for today, a Marine Corps ROTC practice and performance field, and a new business management lab concept at Kofa High School, a brand-new medical assisting program and lab for Vista High School, and a sports medicine and rehabilitation lab at both Cibola and Gila Ridge High Schools. Another celebration that had incredible increase in career and technical education is industry certifications earned by students last year. We increased industry certifications by 45.6%. We also have prepared a plan for CTE students who missed taking their industry certification last spring, and we'll begin implementing that plan as soon as students return to school this fall. In CTE, we don't really like to sit around on our previous-year accolades. So this year, 3,877 CTE students are already currently training and testing for industry certification. My final data set is on career and technical student organizations, and I think some of you might have been involved in those when you were in high school or your students. During the fall of 2019, CTE was only able to engage less than 14% of students in fall leadership conferences or in our officer training events. And that was mainly due to the fact that we had to take them to somewhere else. This year, we have the opportunity to participate in a virtual experience with our students, and we're going to have the opportunity for 100% of our students to participate. We're very excited about that. And at that training, the experts that are going to be training, the students are going to be training them in professional skills or the professional standards, which industry calls soft skills. These are the skills that CTE students will need to get and then keep their future jobs. Student participation this fall represents an 86% increase in fall CTSO participation. Thank you again for your attention. Are there any questions or any information that I can provide to you?
I guess I have one question, which is, have you found that any technology has stood in the way of student participation? Or is our district able to support?
You know, that's a great question. And I think everyone would think that CTE is the one that would not be able to do distance learning. But our teachers have been tremendous. They actually worked for three weeks during the summer in preparation, and they came back with a gusto. They started the year with safety. So as soon as we're able to come back to the labs, then they plan on being in the lab 100% of the time. So with that plan in place, they're just taking care of those things that they normally would do over time, doing that right now, which is an industry certification for the students. OSHA 10 and OSHA 30 is what they're working on. So, so far, so good. I'm sorry?
The test of numbers.
Thank you. Any other questions I can answer? All right.
And who's next? Eric?
Suman.
Suman? Do you have anything to add?
I shall be sent over.
Okay. So we have Ms. Pangasa. Suman Pangasa from Special Education is going to come next. We had a little feedback problem with the noise factor. So sorry for the clunkiness here.
So first of all, I can't express in words how humbled and proud I feel to be part of Yuma Union High School District. After listening to Lori, I'm even feeling more proud. You know, because we have an amazing team here. Talking about special education students, as of today, we have 1,094 students enrolled in our district who are receiving special education. And this is today's statistics. And as many of you know, that all of these students require an individualized education plan, which needs to be updated annually. I'm proud to say that even with the closure since March, we have been able to update 256 IP's and evaluations on time. And as the time comes, we are 100% in compliance with updating our individual education plans and evaluations. Our teachers and instructional leaders, they're doing an awesome job even during March through May. They were trying to reach out every single family, whether they had to make home contact, you know, home visits, whatever method, they tried to contact every single one, and kept logs of their, you know, documentation of their contacts. At this time, I can proudly say that 100% of our students, and I checked my data today before coming to this meeting, 100% of our students who are enrolled in special education are receiving services. More than 90%, a little more than 90% are receiving through online Canvas, and their special ed case workers are continuously working with them, checking on their progress. Some are receiving packets or task boxes based on their needs. But if they are getting task boxes or packets, teachers are going into the virtual classrooms and working with these kids along with them on their packets so that, in fact, parents are expressing so much gratitude right now because they feel like they are able to participate. It's so humbling when you have a freshman student's parent call and say, "I am so happy with the way my kid is learning because I can participate along with my kid and see how the teacher is teaching. Your teacher is wonderful. She's very polite, and she answers my questions, and my kid is very happy." So I'm excited, you know, when that kid comes to school. Before coming to the meeting, I double-checked with every single school, and we have not had a single parent at this time who is not happy with, you know, their child's education. If they're working online, teachers are working in virtual classroom, reading stories along with the kids so that they're able to work on their packets and complete the packets as needed. We also offered onsite learning opportunity. We were hoping many more kids will come because they had severe and profound disabilities. Surprisingly to us, many parents declined because they felt their kids have underlying health conditions. They don't want to take that chance, or somebody else in the family had COVID. So they didn't want to take chance. So very few kids are actually coming for onsite learning opportunity. But the parents seem to feel that they're happy and satisfied with the virtual learning that is taking place, and they are able to participate along with their kids. So they are learning what their kid is learning so that they can also help them later on. As far as related services, our speech therapists are working on teletherapy, and sometimes they have made videos. Again, I talked to the speech therapist yesterday, and she said, "So many parents have said, 'My gosh, I didn't even know what my kid was going through when they were going through speech therapy, and now I have learned some things that I can work with my kid later on.'" Because this participation with the parents has been a very good experience for the parents to learn from the speech therapist. Physical therapist has videos that she's shared with the parents and families, and then she calls them and does a virtual thing. So, so far, it's working very well for the kids. And I think I'm very optimistic always. So I feel like there is going to be a new appreciation for our teachers. And, you know, because parents are now able to see what our teachers work with our students. So when we say our district's motto, "Every child, college career, and community prepared," I feel all our special needs are part of that "every child." Our commitment to every special ed kid is very strong. And knowing through this crisis how well our paraprofessionals, our teachers, and our instructional leaders are committed to providing that service, I am amazed and really humbled. Any questions?
I know they won't hear any of this in court. That's why we're here this time. So please ask.
I can't let a good silence go. My question to you, first of all, thank you. It is very exciting, very enlightening. But my question to you is, if and when we go to a hybrid learning scenario, how, what opportunities are available for our special ed children? Is it the same as our general population, or is it altered?
It is based on their individual needs because every kid has individual education plan, and they will be provided services based on their individual needs. Unfortunately, a lot of our severe and profound kids have such health conditions that many parents have already said, even when you do hybrid, we may not feel comfortable sending our kid to school because they don't want to take that chance.
And so how are we going to help that?
We do provide home-based too. We have a homebound teacher, and then several of our other teachers do extra for homebound, providing virtual or online, and then meeting them in a virtual setup.
Thank you. And it is also great to hear that parents feedback, that they like being engaged, the whole process of the learning.
Yeah, I mean, I was happy to hear all that, you know.
Thank you. You have a excellent.
That's just an amazing report, and I appreciate it. And your numbers are staggering, the success that you appear to be having there.
Yeah, I mean, 98% students are engaged, you know. And I talked to instructional leaders, and they said, "I have sat in virtual classrooms with several of my teachers, and I see student participation, and I'm very happy with it." So it's like very humbling to know that kids are participating.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who are we expecting next? Do you know?
Dean.
Dean? Okay.
Can't tell I'm smiling. President Townsend, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to share the technological groundwork that the district has implemented to be successful in this exact moment. In 2011, the district set forth a vision of every student to have a district-issued device to support their learning. There was a lot of trial and error back then, especially in the early years. 10 years later, 30,000 devices later, 3,300 devices just this year, we have come a long way to meeting this initiative, and I'm proud to say that our students this year all have a device where they can engage in their learning. In 2013, the district had another vision of every teacher and student engaged electronically on a common learning management platform. We had a bunch going on at that time. With the approval of this board in 2014, the district partnered with Instructure and began the implementation of Canvas. Again, that partnership is paying dividends today as teachers and students across the district are using Canvas every day as the common platform to engage in remote learning. Following school closures last spring, campus leadership teams went to work to identify issues that were preventing our students from being fully engaged in remote learning. One issue that came to the forefront was the lack of internet access at home for our students. To help our students participate in remote learning, the district acquired 500 Verizon wireless hotspots for students to check out. Currently, there are more than 150 students engaged in remote learning supported by this initiative. There are many other partnerships that the district has formed with companies like Google, Microsoft, Cisco, and others that have helped to create a foundation of success for remote learning. Additionally, there have been countless improvements, integrations, and automations throughout district systems that are helping our students and teachers to be successful during this time. And I'd like to personally thank the technology department staff who are doing a lot of behind-the-scenes work to make this stuff successful. Our technological foundations are really solid thanks to their dedication and diligence. Finally, this hasn't happened by accident. We're not where we're at by accident. All of this has been made possible thanks to great vision from our district leadership, support of the governing board, our great partnerships, and the can-do attitude that we have across our district. So that's what I have. Are there any questions for me?
I do have a question. So the 500 hotspots, are those for us to continue to keep and to be able to issue out?
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
I'm glad that you purchased 3,300 extra computers. How come we need them?
Actually, this is a, every year, we go through a refresh cycle. So every four years, we take out our oldest devices. So our senior devices from last year went out of the inventory or went into our spare or loaner program. And then we give all of our freshmen brand-new devices. So these 3,300 devices were slated to be purchased for our freshmen for this year.
Okay, so it was anticipated.
It is anticipated.
Thank you. This is the comment I heard, that Andy now that is receiving the devices, what will it all do? So a lot of teamwork and coordination and the heat.
I give all the credit to the campuses because we just try to facilitate getting the devices to them, and they work with their parents and students to get them out.
Yes, and Bravo to having knowledgeable people on each campus to help the kids and the parents. And Mr. Alf, I really appreciate that.
Dean does not, tutus on harm very well. I can't tell you how many meetings that we've had where somebody asks a question, and he will literally say, "Oh, we can solve that," or "We can help you with that." When he talks about his department, yes. And his leadership really is an example of that. So I just, I don't know where we'd be without Mr. Far. And we're very lucky that we also share him with District One. Somehow, he juggles two superintendents. I'm sure I'm easier. But he's somehow juggles it all.
And this room, she's the easiest.
Absolutely.
Today, tonight, I mean. But honestly, it feels like he's always here and always available, as well as his staff. So we're just very fortunate. And the imaging that has to go on with every single device to prepare it for every single year, it's not even a matter of just handing it out and taking back in the cleaning, just the diligence to make it ready for every student every year and in a safe environment, not just cleanliness safe, but with filters and making sure that, you know, that worldwide system that we have doesn't interfere with our own children. So there's no way to sum it all up, and he's accurate, and it's been going on for a very long time. But really appreciate the leadership.
Thank you.
Are you also in charge of not just the hardware, but the software end of it? Is that your department's help?
That is my department.
So Canvas, do you need?
So Canvas is interesting. We actually share some duties there with Melissa Elgood.
I didn't need Canvas. Continue.
Oh, wow.
No, I'm sorry. I misspoke. But I want her answer.
So we kind of do the technical, how do we get all the students in the system and get them assigned to the right classes? And then Melissa Elgood and her team, which isn't very big. Melissa Elgood does the lion's share of the work to help teachers and students with what's going on in that system on a day-in, a day-out basis.
Thank you. Moving on to student view.
Okay.
You support that as well?
Yes.
So I have a question on the parents of current students. The percentages of their grades has disappeared. And my particular student and some of his friends have said that they would love to have it back because there's a big difference between an 80 and an 89. And it says B, and so there's just a really large range. And so I think for self-monitoring purposes, it's very helpful. Are we able to get that back?
I'm sure we are. I'll look in, I will specifically look into this issue and see what's going on with that. And we might have some really good answers. I just couldn't tell you right off the top of my head.
Many students were there. Thank you. Heather?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Well, I'd say one of the interesting things, I actually struck it out of my little thing here today, is that with, between Canvas and Synergy, those two systems are now talking together in a way that is not normal. And so what's happening is we're actually able to push information from our student information system into Canvas so that we eliminate a lot of hand entry. And then we actually receive information back from Canvas into Synergy, preventing our teachers from having to do a lot of hand entry for grades and things of that nature. And so I'm sure as I'm hearing this, I'm already thinking like, "Okay, where can this problem be?" I'm sure it's potentially in some of the setup for that.
But those are two separate companies that have never spoken together before in spite of what we were sold.
We were the pilot for that last spring.
Yeah.
These teachers were operating in two different systems and having to transfer their grades. And they asked us to be the pilot merging the systems to share the data being sent. And so we did that last spring with a private group, and then decided to move forward with the whole district this year.
We.
Producing supplementary rates.
Quite literally, we were the only organization that either company was working with to do this. And so, and now they have like, because of the work we did, they have like 70 additional school districts doing this. So. Good times.
Good times being first. Thank you. Thanks so much, Mr. Far.
I think Eric Patton's next.
Are you going to be able to speak? All right. With that, with that background, yeah, I'll help you if I do what to do.
So good evening, and thank you. I'm Eric Patton, Chief Communications Officer. And one of our goals, when the initial school closure occurred in March, was to really improve the reliability and information on our website. Since we rolled them out in January of 2018, we felt like it was definitely a source of information that was useful for families. But we knew at this new time in our lives that the websites were going to be something that was dramatically more impactful for people. So looking at some of the numbers regarding our website and with that goal in mind, just since July 1st, we've had 213,204 visits to our seven campus homepages and our COVID-19 page. That's it. We're not counting all the other visits to the athletics page, which I'm sure got a lot more traffic in recent weeks, or any of the other areas. Just those essentially 14 pages had over 213,000 visitors, and that was as of yesterday. And we saw increases year over year in the past, going from, you know, 200,000 to 300,000 visitors to our homepages to almost 600,000 in the 2019-20 year. And that number was exponentially higher just from March to May. So that goal, I feel like, was one of our strongest elements. We've created graphics and things like that that have tried to make things a little bit easier for families in terms of understanding what's going on. The distance learning graphic, for example, was shared, you know, working in combination with Melissa Elgood and Eric Brooks and Lisa Anderson. We created that graphic to give a snapshot of what the schedule would look like, did it in school colors and things like that, and then shared that out across our channels, which kind of segues into my other area, which is messaging. Overall, this school year especially has really taken on a new precedent of messaging. But we've also tried not to inundate families with messages every day about things that are going on. We wanted to really make sure that we were concrete on factual information, information that wasn't speculation and that could be useful. Sometimes it caused people to wait maybe a week or two to hear about things that they wanted to. But we really tried to be strategic in that messaging. So we didn't want staff to hear about something through the media. We didn't want parents to hear about something before our staff did. So especially with those big picture messages, we strategically would wait a day or two before we informed other people besides our staff. Then we might go to parents and students next, and then we would release that information publicly through our main channels of social media, press release, and our websites. The main channel for communication for our parents has been through Blackboard. So if parents are watching and aren't receiving texts, phone calls, or emails, please update your preferences and put the correct contact or most up-to-date contact information in there because really, that's the most reliable form of information, especially for the big-picture things. And we've really tried to mitigate reliance on social media for that stuff, which is a little bit of a shift from back in March. Because in March, we were really cognizant of social media being a platform for discussion, responding to people on there in addition to all of the other personal customer service experiences that people have. But shifting into 2021 school year, we've really tried to take the social media dialogue out of it, use social media carefully and responsibly and as a way to message, but be a little bit more personal. So you're getting a direct text or phone call or email for those big things. If you have questions, we're saying, "Please don't go to social media and have that conversation. Let's give your campus a call." And I think our principals especially, we've worked together a lot, but they've really taken charge on that. And I give the campuses a lot of credit, not just the building principals, but all of the assistants in really trying to put a personal touch on that communication, asking people to make those phone calls if they have questions and redirecting them in that way. And we're going to continue doing that. And then the last thing is, we've really wanted to make immediate presence for not promoting our things as we have, you know, for the last three or three years, but really to get information out. And the presence that we kind of usually think of, our TV and the Yuma sign and things like that, which continue to be valuable for us. But one of the specific strategic decisions that we made coming into this year was to focus on radio. The reason being, a lot of our families that don't have internet connectivity, that aren't using smartphones, they may not be receiving the emails or having regular access to our website. They still need that information. And I worked at Yuma High. I saw that firsthand coaching there and teaching there. And I've seen the data from schools, San Luis, Kofa in a lot of cases, where that internet accessibility is not the same as it is for other schools. So trying to get that same information in parents' and families' hands through the radio has been a big goal for all of us in this room. We've created advertising spots and appearances on Long Campesina to reach our Spanish-speaking families. We've made a monthly appearance on Jennifer Blackwell's show on Z93, who's been a wonderful partner for the district. We've appeared on KAWC every month. We've appeared on KTTI. We've made other radio appearances intermittently, including the City Radio Show with Dave Nash, and really just trying to reach as many families as we can with those big-picture important things. And I think that moving forward, that's something that, from the communication standpoint, is going to take priority, even over promoting some of the amazing things. even over promoting some of the amazing things that are going on, like the fifteen thousand dollar rural um farmer's grant that Sebola just received. Um, so that it's going to be a balance of those things moving forward. Any questions?
I have a comment. I think it's um wonderful that you have the website, everything in English and Spanish, all the information that can be accessed. And I I really commend you for creating that and and having that on our website. It would be helpful to our parents and students.
Thank you. That that's something that we've received feedback, and it's been a goal of mine. Being certainly not fluent by any means, we've we've really worked uh in partnership with Rigo Comde at San Luis High School, who's done a lot of the translation for us to make sure that it's accurate. We're trying to do organic translation, whether it's with Elvia Young in our district office or or Rigo in San Luis, because we don't want to rely on Google Translate. Um, and one thing I will note is that regardless of if you speak Spanish or English or or French or any other language, you can use the translate button on the top right corner of the website to get the Google Translate version of anything that's native on our website. But with those messages to parents especially, it's um it's really important to me personally, and I know for everybody else that we we do a lot more and have a lot a larger focus on on bilingual um messages.
Although I do not envy your job. Oh, I I thank you in the bottom of my heart for doing it so well. Um, it's it's been an uphill battle sometimes. And I really just wanted to make a comment about the neighborhood feel that I see on our campuses. It's really amazing that our our just our cabinet knows individuals that you just mentioned somebody and that that school's cabinet will just know what's going on in their lives. And I really appreciate that neighborhood feel, even though we're trying to universally um attract and attend to all of our students' needs. And I think I I give you a scan of it.
I think I think that's one of the most unique things for us is that balance between being equitable and having everybody the same information and the same accessibility, but also having the unique feel and and consciousness of what our neighborhoods and our communities look like because they're different at all six campuses. And I think our our on-campus personnel are so in tune with that more than ever in my four years, here five years now.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I think Grace Pruitt is next. Grace.
Hello, good afternoon. On March seventeenth, with the closure of schools, the Student Nutrition Department transitioned from operating the School Breakfast Program and National School Lunch Program to the Summer Food Service Program. The Summer Food Service Program allows us to serve meals at no cost to any child eighteen or younger. Between March seventeenth and June thirtieth, we served a hundred and seventy-two thousand, one hundred and forty meals. Fast forward to the start of school on August sixth, our department returned to operating the School Breakfast Program and the National School Lunch Program. Under these programs, we can only offer meals at no cost to students enrolled with our district. On August sixth, we started by offering drive-through meal service Monday through Friday from eleven to one. On August seventeenth, we began serving students attending campus for onsite learning as well as the students enrolled in the Yuma Online Distance Academy. On August nineteenth, we furthered our meal service by adding bus routes in an effort to meet these kids where they're at in the community. Meals are offered at all six campuses and along four bus routes, which offers an additional seven stops in the Somerton, San Luis, and Yuma communities. As of yesterday, we have served thirteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six meals. Participation on the bus routes has increased on average thirteen percent per day, and our overall participation has increased uh seven percent on average per week. Student nutrition follows very strict health and safety guidelines for our operations. However, as with all departments in our district, when the pandemic reached our community, we sought ways to enhance our practices. This led to increased safety measures for staff, including face masks and face shields and health screenings daily, screenings for anyone entering the kitchen area, outdoor handwashing stations for the drive-through meal service, and contactless scanners for ID entry. We also worked with our chemical provider to follow best practices as recommended by the CDC. We have partnered with campus administrators to develop meal service plans for when students return to campus under the hybrid learning schedule. Students can expect to see the grab-and-go meal service uh continue in a contactless process. Um, and staff and students have asked if we will be serving meals in the classroom, and at this time, we do not plan to do so. We will continue to utilize our cafeterias. Meal service will be indoors or outdoors in an effort to promote social distancing and also allow for maximum um seating within the indoor cafeteria. We are excited to have students back on campus safely so we can continue to serve them. Um, and thank you for your time. And at this time, do you have any questions for me? Yes, ma'am.
I don't want to ruin my streak. Something interesting happened, and I have a student, I have a son. And um, we received a card in the mail.
Mm-hmm.
And um, I just kind of filed it away. I didn't know what it was. And yesterday, I received three separate letters, all saying the same thing. And um, it said, you have this much money in this account for your son.
Mm-hmm.
And it's going to expire on this date.
Mm-hmm.
Did we explain that to families, what that was for, or why people were getting it? Because I know it has to do with nutrition.
Um, it is loosely tied to nutrition, yes, but it was not something that was done by our district. That was done at the state level. So we did not initially push any information out. And that card you're referring to is the P E B T card, um, the pandemic um benefit card, um, that was issued out by the state. And so all of that was handled by the Arizona Department of Education as well as the Department of Economic Security. They pulled our student information from A D E and D E S issued those cards out. So we did not have a hand um in that process at all. It was all done um outside of our district. And we did provide information. And once we were notified that those cards were sent out and we started receiving phone calls from parents, um, we did provide information to um secretaries, administrators um here at our district so they could answer those questions when they started receiving them um from parents and and students.
I'm wondering if maybe we could post something just on each campuses, whether they just like have a question about this? Maybe click here and if they at least point back to the state?
Mm-hmm. Mr. Patton has all the information, so.
It it was in our F A Q when families started receiving that during last school year. We had it on the school, each school's F A Q for the on their COVID page. It has since been taken off that version of the F A Q because it was um kind of omitted.
Right.
Mostly related to things about graduation and we did receive some Facebook comments um about that further back, like in April, May, when we tried to respond to those. Um, there were some families that had some pretty detailed questions. But we can post that, post that back on there.
Right, only because the letters came out yesterday. That's why I was thinking maybe we can.
So the interesting about that, we had no idea until one of our own staff member got got, I think it was Mr. Grant's that actually, um, got the cards at home, and we didn't even know that that was a something that was going to to happen. Um, I think again, Grace, like Dean, doesn't talk much about the amazing work that she's done. I think what's been most um interesting and just crazy for me to watch is how delayed the action is by at the federal and, you know, the national and state level. And that literally Grace is watching websites and um, you know, overnight waiting for, are we going to be able to distribute meals tomorrow? Should, what should I be planning for? So you're trying to order food for, you know, this prolonged period of time, and yet you don't know what tomorrow will bring. And, you know, not not even saying a fault, it's just the way it has been. And she's just, she hasn't missed a beat. Her staff from day one, even when they were nervous about being out, even before we had all of our P P E, we had just enough face masks, and Grace was running around like a crazy person and going to Sam's Club and everywhere else like in her own vehicle to get whatever food items because the food supply chain was non-existent. Um, I I honestly, I just look, it's a blur, and I can't imagine what what her life must be like. Luckily, she's young and physically fit and really super smart and knows everybody. But in the heat, in the weather, her she and her staff have not missed a single moment. And just thank you for all that you did, and nobody will ever know. Um, even when she had to deliver bad news to me or somebody else because we couldn't do something, it might be in thirty minutes or another day that the good news came or or whatever. So she's she's been amazing. She's an amazing woman and amazing leader.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I love that we have the buses that are sticking um the the lunches throughout Yuma County.
Um, do you, that will probably continue um for a while. And are you planning, another question to that is,
so with that thirteen percent that keeps increasing, you just have to keep increasing your your food orders and and planning for that?
Um, so to answer your first question, um, as of right now, we're planning to operate the bus routes during uh distance learning. We are currently evaluating our staffing structure as well as, uh, we obviously have to partner with transportation. Um, and so we're currently in that process of determining if we are going to be able to continue it when we move into the hybrid schedule, if if our staffing and transportation allows for it. And we hope that we can, but we don't, we don't have that finalized yet. And and with the daily increase in participation that we've had, um, my my staff and my managers do a phenomenal job. And and it's a, it's a guessing game for them. It's, you have to look at every single day from day to day. And then also the meals is, this meal is very high participation. We have it today. The kids know that. They might have more. And so they do an a fabulous job um planning for the that participation and increasing or decreasing wherever they need to. Um, and then they use that for their weekly orders that they do as well.
Grace, uh, just because I don't have a child in the school district, I have a granddaughter, but um, what do the meals consist of? Like you were delivering out to the students during?
Mm-hmm. And so our our programs are federally and state mandated, so there's some requirements that we have to meet. And there are um five components that we have to put onto a plate. And and typically, we offer that to a student. Right now, we're obviously pre-plating because we have to have it packaged, ready to go. And but those five components consist of a grain, a meat or a meat alternative, a vegetable, a fruit, and milk. And and so they'll see a variety on their plate. Um, with our fruits, we have applesauce, uh, fruit cups, uh, fresh fruit, bananas, oranges, apples. And with the vegetables, it's anything from french fries. That does count as your vegetable. Ours are healthier. Um, then we'll let you get through a fast food drive-through line. So, yes, we have all the condiments, everything that that they need that we can fit within our parameters um of those requirements that we have to meet. Um, main meal options, it could be um any type of burgers, cheeseburgers, bacon cheeseburgers, uh, tamales, takitos, uh, chicken sandwiches, buffalo wraps, boneless wings. Um, we have a large variety that that we offer to them. But those are the five components that we have to have on that plate.
Sound like they're nice meals.
Mm-hmm.
Do you have any anticipation um when we move into hybrid learning that you will not be able to accommodate just the student population within just the two lunches that we previously have? You think we're going to need more than two lunches? I'm really questioning my backwards here.
Um, I don't foresee any issues with it, no. Um, our uh, the staff have done an excellent job um in years past um with operating under two lunches. And so when I communicated to them going into the hybrid um learning schedule that they aren't going to have, the full student population on campus, um, they they did it about an hour. They're ready to go. Um, they're excited to have kids back, and and they're used to a very fast and high pace. So um, having those students um in two lunch periods, social distance, they're not worried about it. Um, again, everything is going to be grab and go, and it's going to be a contactless process. Um, and so and it will be indoors and outdoors combination depending on the campus. And so what that's going to look like for them is they're going to come through the line, their ID will be scanned, um, and then they're going to be asked what meal they want for the day. Everything's already going to be pre-plated in a to-go box form that's going to be handed to them. And then if they want the milk or the water, that's also going to be offered to them and handed to them. So it will be very quick, um, very fast process. And we've worked again with administrators to make sure that we have the proper spacing to social distance the students. Um, and they've also worked to make the indoor and outdoor seating accommodating for social distancing.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. So right after eating, we're going to go right into athletics. So we'll have Mr. KB come in. We'll work it off. Right? That's all I needed to tell.
Good evening, guys. So last week on August seventeenth, athletics were able to start uh getting the ball rolling back in our district. Uh, one of the the most important steps we took was working with Dr. Ryan Zur to provide two hundred and thirty-four cost-free physicals to our students. That way they could go through the clearance process and they can be ready. Um, and that number is going to change because tomorrow night, we're we're holding it at Yuma High, so we're hoping to eclipse the three hundred uh mark. Um, and then moving from there, last week, golf was ready to tee it up. They were able to start practice on Monday, the seventeenth. This week, we've had both cross-country and swim able to to begin practices. And volleyball and football have been able to take steps to practice as well uh under what we would consider the out-of-season uh guidelines, even though volleyball is scheduled to start officially on Monday, the thirty-first, and football on Monday, September seventh. They've been able to at least take steps to get out there and practice. Now, all our athletes are under um the the phase one return to athletics protocol. So to to sum that up, basically, our athletes are allowed to be doing outdoor activity only, and they're in small groups of no more than than ten individuals. They're socially distant. And again, it's it's outdoor conditioning only, so there's there's no equipment being shared. They're not inside the weight room or inside of a gym. It's a a great opportunity for the kids to come out and just start having some some social interaction with their with their team, with the coaches, which has been the 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 best part of it, uh, as well as taking steps to just physically prepare for that that possible return to athletics. Uh, the coaches have done a great job being very flexible with the athletes who who are ready to be out there, as well as those families that are that are still not not prepared, whether it's a clearance issue or something else. The the coaches have done a great job throughout the district, setting up virtual practices and at least keeping all the kids connected to the programs. Uh, from there, uh, we also have taken steps to move into um scheduling a Yuma Union High School district-only schedule that has really allowed us to take control of the situation. Uh, it removes a lot of the uncertainty surrounding the teams that were prep prep before this on our schedule for Maricopa County that have expressed concern that they wouldn't be able to come down and face us. So as teams, you don't have to worry about having a game scheduled for Thursday and then getting a call Wednesday that they can't come down, and the kids are left with nothing. Uh, more importantly, it allows us to keep uh our germ cohorts localized here in Yuma. And by allowing us to take control of the timeline, we ensure that our athletes aren't in a position where they have to rush back and prepare for a competition before they're physically ready uh or realistically before it's safe for them to do so. So we're able to preserve that schedule, uh, make sure that our athletes still have a possibility to get a season of sport if if we're able to move forward with that and do so under conditions where they're prepared and where we can ensure that once it starts, that their season is in place because it's it's here um controlled by by our district. And it still presents an opportunity for athletes uh to to qualify for for state competition in swim and golf and in cross-country. So it's it's been a a great uh couple of weeks, seeing the athletes back out on the field, uh, the the excitement just from from coaches and parents about things getting rolling. Um, but also just the the amazing collaboration between all the schools in the district, working with coaches, with athletic trainers, with parents, to make sure everybody is aware of what's going on. Um, everybody's done a great job of being understanding of the needs of our students and what steps they need to take uh to to move forward with this. And it's just been a a great um, a a great time to to be involved in athletics. Because when when things are their worst, we're at our best, and that's been very true with with what's taking place over the summer and the fall. Uh, and so I can't say enough about the great work that all our coaches are doing. Uh, and then just the athletes about being a aware of what they need to do to to be ready, what they also need to do to keep themselves safe, and uh just doing all they can to to be a part of our district. So it, do you guys have any questions for me?
I just want to say thank you. I think that physical wellness is just as important as mental and spiritual wellness. So thank you for helping our students, all of you, um, to get back out there on the field or on the track. Have you run into any uh supply issues with like personal water bottles for the athlete or anything like that?
Um, there there's been some hurdles, some some extra steps that we've needed to take as athletic directors because under the the phase one requirements, again, it's still very limited to what the kids can do. Uh, and that also includes the the water. And that also includes the water element of it. It's limited to one coach is designated to bring the water to and from practice. And it's not the typical situation where they would have a water bottle or a rack of water bottles that were shared amongst the team. Every individual has their own canister. And so some of the steps that have been taken, a few campuses have moved to purchasing just disposable cups where the athlete is given their cup, and it's filled. It's not reused. That way, there's no cross-contamination there. Some schools, depending on the sport, have also just purchased water bottles on their own, just some of the twenty-ounce disposable water bottles. So if an athlete didn't bring their own or didn't have access to it, we made sure that they still had their own private water bottle that they could use because it's Yuma in the summertime. You can't have athletics without water. So I wouldn't call them issues, but they've been some hurdles. But we're used to it. The coaches are working with it. The athletic trainers have been great accommodating it. And depending on the need of each campus or sport, coming up with a plan to make sure the kids have what they need.
Thank you.
No problem.
I love that we were able to, those students maybe are ready or those aren't, that they're still engaged and part of the team and communicating with the coaches and still doing the workout. And that's great that they can have a golf and run. So that's awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. I can't say enough about the coaches in our district being just very flexible with the athletes, understanding that it's not your normal circumstances. And they, like everybody else in our district, they're just here to do what's right by the kids. And so they're not worried about cutoff dates or tryouts. It's what can we do to help the kids? And that's their main priority. And I can speak to that on my campus, and I know the other athletic directors would say the same thing.
Yeah, right. Thank you.
I'm just glad that you tried to provide these kids with some semblance of normalcy that they can participate in. You know, that's a big part of high school life. And I'm very grateful that the athletic directors and the coaches are stepping up and working hard to provide that for them.
Yeah, it's, it is important, but it's the coaches, they're educators as well, and they understand that just what can we do to get the kids involved? And even if it's just virtually, there's been a number of coaches and programs that understand maybe meeting in person isn't the best right now, but we're gonna set up some Google meets. We're gonna have some online training sessions. A number of coaches that even just set up meetings with the athletes just to talk to them, see how they were doing. So it's just one more avenue we have to stay connected to the kids and try to be a positive light in their life.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
This manifold will, she will be closing out this session. So we're thrilled to see her today.
Hello. I'm really happy to be part of the meeting tonight to tell you all of the really great things that are going on in our classrooms. As teachers, we're servicing all of our students five days a week and seeing them face-to-face, although digitally, at least twice a week. And we're doing it all safely for staff and students alike. There are a lot of successes to celebrate, and let me just name a few. The first thing is student attendance. We have found that students are ready to learn and that they are coming to our synchronous times together, ready to prove for that thirst of knowledge. Many of my students work to help provide for their families during that time and enjoy the more convenient way to join their peers in class. The great thing about the manner in which we're conducting class now is that if they happen to miss our lessons, we have afternoons and Wednesdays to meet with them so that they can get caught up. This flexibility has a result in more work turned in and better grades. Another thing that we need to talk about is student engagement. Students using this schedule that we're in now are posing many more questions to their teachers and having meaningful discussions with classmates. The multiple ways that they can engage in class discussions and messaging their teachers is providing students with a feeling of both freedom and reliability. Because of all of this, students seem much more answerable for their own academic success. No longer are they dependent upon their teachers for all of the material, sorry, but they are owning the experience of education and becoming more responsible learners. The third thing that we need to talk about is the use of Canvas. Our district had the utmost foresight to introduce the use of Canvas six years ago. But until this experience, we've never realized its true potential. Using an LMS that is designed to make learning a logical, structured place to gather and store information has made life in our digital classrooms a really great place to be. Students seem much more organized, and they are prepared, and they're using the platform to be better learners. This schedule has allowed our students to use the technology provided for them to be far more productive, organized, and responsible. Now let's talk about the teachers. As the instructional leader of English at Sebola High School, I have never seen my teachers work harder than they are now, and most of them are really, truly enjoying it. Teachers are collaborating more because this schedule allows us to confer multiple times to go over lesson plans and learn new innovative ways to educate our students. This schedule also allows us to delve deeper into the standards and to narrow down what we actually need to teach our students so that there's no wasted time and no frivolous assignments. So the bottom line is that we need to do what's best for our students. We all understand this, educators, administrators, and community members. And what's best for our students is giving them a sense of routine and consistency. Our students understand and are thriving with this schedule. Our teachers are providing them with well-thought-out, viable, and researched lessons that will make them college and career-ready. Do you all have any questions?
I just have a comment. The chatter I hear from the parents and the students that I get to be around a little bit in this time is so positive towards the teachers. I know my own granddaughter, particularly the one that's a freshman, can't wait to meet her teachers that she sees online.
That's right.
She's just very impressed with them. My daughter, you know, and the other parents I talk with just are so grateful at how hard these teachers are working right now and helping their kids. And so it's great feedback, and it's great that they acknowledge that. I think the brothers and dads having to be at home helping them, they're really appreciating you guys a lot more.
Well, thank you so much. Yeah, we're working really hard to make sure that the experience that they're going to digitally is not a wasted experience for them. And granted, we as, I've been teaching in this district for twenty-seven years, and I really haven't worked this hard before. It's really, it's really put a lot of onus on us as the teachers to make sure that we're providing quality education for both the students who are in front of us digitally, but also the parents who need to help their children. We get a lot of messaging from both students and parents, asking for help during office times. And it's really apparent that the community is working together to educate our children.
Well, it's very noticed and appreciated.
Thank you.
Have you had feedback from parents? For instance, do they enjoy being able to with their students or?
I think it's a mixture. I've got some parents who have realized that teaching is a tough gig. But also, I've got a lot of parents claiming that as they're sitting there with their younger kids overhearing some of the things that are going on with their older kids, that they too are learning new things, and they're really happy to have this opportunity. Yeah.
Thank you for your presentation. And I have heard lots of chatter like what Mr. Townsend said from kids and from parents and from staff. And the thing that has impressed me more than almost anything is the collaboration that the teachers are offering the students and the group projects that are happening virtually, which helps the students feel connected to their peers. And I think it's so important. And also, I applaud this district from the bottom of my heart for the schedule that you have offered these children where they're not in front of their peers eight hours a day, which is untended. And I'm grateful that we're just high school and we not pay twelve, especially this challenge. So I cannot thank all of the teachers enough. It's really been amazing, miraculous. So thank you so much.
Thank you again. I appreciate that. Anyone else?
Thank you.
No, thank you. Have a nice evening.
President Townsend and governing board members, that concludes the report that we had and the interaction. But we, I think we have, we're at the end as we prepare for our next meeting, our special meeting. But if there's anything else from any of our board members?
Did you wanna discuss the moving forward or, you know, from here?
Well, I think-
I mean, it's all-
... here this evening, pretty dynamic teachers that are working to look at going back. When we go back in session with people on campus, what would a hybrid look like? How can we provide the best environment, not only for being there, but also for the actual learning when you have half of your students still in the digital environment and half in front of you? It sounds easy, but somebody's missing out. And so right now, we feel like our work has to be in how to mitigate that and how to provide the best environment for all. So that would be, our moving forward really is about scheduling a special meeting next Wednesday with the proposal and also looking at that health data from our Yuma County Health Department as of that time period. If that works for you.
Okay.
Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn so we can go into our regular meeting?
I believe adjourn. Five seconds.
Motion's been made by Ms. Mellon, second by Ms. Kravitz to adjourn. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? We will call this meeting, the special meeting of the Yuma Union High School District Number Seventy-Governing Board to Order. Item, first item on the agenda is the updated substitute pay hybrid learning. It was in your packet. Mr. Brians is not here. Ms. Thompson, whatever.
Sure. We have brought the substitute pay earlier in the, I can't remember the month that we had voted upon the increase for substitutes. In the hybrid model, we'll be looking at a potential block schedule. So it would look at a modified pay also or a different pay structure. So that's what we provided for you and your packet.
Is there a motion?
I believe there's a motion to make.
It would be to accept the-
I believe that we accept the proposed substitute pay grades when going traditional and hybrid learning applies. Seven.
Motion has been made by Ms. Kravitz, seconded by Ms. Mellon to adopt the substitute pay hybrid learning schedule as presented. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Next item is consideration to approve routine personnel. It is recommended the governing board approve the personnel action for administrative, certified, and classified employees per the attached list categories. They were in your packet. You have them there. Is there a motion?
I believe that we, the governing board, approve personnel action for administrative, certified, and classified employees per the attached list categories indicated. Five seconds.
Motion made by Ms. Mellon, seconded by Ms. Kravitz.
President Townsend, I'm so sorry. I was looking at the agenda. In full transparency, I needed to notify the board that line ninety-four was an addition after your first packet, the draft packet was sent to you.
But it was sent out yesterday.
Okay, yes. Just wanted to make sure.
Yes. Okay. A motion has been made, seconded by Ms. Kravitz, to accept the government- Governing Board approved the personnel action for administrative, certified, and classified employees per the attached list categories indicated. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we proceed to vote. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Next item is executive session. ARS thirty-eight dash four-three-one point eight-seven, discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the public body in order to consider its position and instructive representatives regarding negotiations for the purchase, sell, or lease of real property. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I believe that we will move to executive session.
Motion made by Ms. Kravitz, seconded by Ms. Mellon to go into executive session. All in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? We will take it.